Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:06. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you just mute your computer? Reverb on your computer. I think it's your computer. Computer mic off? Okay, great. Can you put on mute? The volume? Please. Okay, I think that's better. Yeah, alright, no reverb. Alright, that's better. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Siciliano?
Here.
Mr. Bassfider?
Here.
Mrs. West?
Here. Okay, need a motion to adopt the agenda? I heard Mr. Krieger. Okay, any changes?
Yes, we do have an R-Star presentation today. That's now on your agenda.
Okay, great. Call the roll please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes. Okay, we have our agenda. Alright, first, we have a presentation by Mrs. Baldwin. And it was supposed to be Mrs. Spence, but since we are social distancing, this presentation is the IDEA, which is our special education budget, which we're required to do every year. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Baldwin.
We should have a copy in front of you, and I have it on the screen for the audience at home. As Mrs. West said, this is a presentation that we are required to do annually to give our community an opportunity to learn more about our IDEA funding and offer any comments or questions, suggestions they have on how we might spend the money differently. So first of all, I have the purpose of the IDEA funding, which is to provide a free, appropriate public education to students with disabilities. And the money that we receive from the federal level, as you can see in item B, there are restrictions on how this money is to be used. The funds are allocated so that each state receives an amount that is equal to the amount that was received in 1999. So in 21 years, there has not been a change to the way that IDEA funding is allocated. The next slide shows the different disability categories. And you can see last year in this current school year, the different students that were identified under each category and the number of students. The categories in red are this 2020 school here, and the items in blue are 19th school year. Currently, we have 205 students who have been assigned a disability category. Last year, we had 198. For those students, it really takes a team to provide all the educational needs. These are all the different job occupations that are employed by Rootstown Schools. Not all of these positions are paid by IDEA. We do know that our students, every year, our students' needs are great and continually growing. We have 12 intervention specialists. And I think as you'll see through the coming slides, just how much extra work they have to do outside of the classroom to meet the requirements of this federal mandate. Lastly, you see, we also contract with Mahoney County Educational Service Center and a couple of different groups to provide more than just the education. We also have to provide occupational therapy, physical therapy, nursing, behavior therapy, and some additional items. As part of this funding, there are six principles of IDEA. And these must be followed in the Special Ed Department in order for us to receive this funding. The first principle is zero reject. And there are two criteria for eligibility. A student must be determined to have a disability that is covered by IDEA and that because of the disability, the student needs special education and related services. Now, the LEA, that's us, the local education, that would be the school district, each year needs to conduct a full and individual evaluation on each child with a disability. And that's the first step in the process. They have to identify what the disability is and what possible related services are needed. As part of these evaluation procedures, a student has to be assessed in all areas related to the disability and use a variety of assessment tools. So there are a number of considerations that the interventionists have to meet when they are creating the individual education plan. Principle number three, this has to be a free and appropriate public education. So this is provided at public expense. Once the IEP is written, an educational plan is designed, and this must be paid for by the district. And not only does this include the academic needs of the student, but it must address their physical and motor skills, language skills, vocational skills, and functional skills. Sorry. So in addition to the academic requirements, they're also required to provide related services. And these related services could be any of these items listed here, or they could be additional based on the IEP. And again, this is provided by public funds. Principle number four is the least restrictive environment. This means that we are required to keep students in the classrooms with their peers. And they must be educated to the best that we can do with other children who are not disabled. And again, that's where the intervention specialists really have a tough job to provide educational services in addition to what they're getting in the regular classroom. Those students can only be removed when the supplementary services are just not meeting the needs of the student. The plan has to be individualized. One size does not fit all, as we all know from the work we do here in education, that children are not cans of soup. You can't just roll out one program that's going to be one size fits all. And that's especially true in special education. The least restrictive environment includes these categories with, from least to most restrictive, things monitoring, in-classroom support, all the way through residential placement. As part of this program, parents and student rights are paramount. We have to be very careful to make sure we are meeting all the procedural safeguards that are required at the federal level. One of these is parental participation, that the parents must be included as part of the evaluation process and part of the education plan. Again, our intervention specialists meet with the parents to work with them to develop those plans. The whole process goes from programming to evaluation to assessment and back to programming, as the IEP needs to be updated each year or as the needs of the student change. So this is a very big job for our special education department. One of the things we have to do in order to qualify for the federal funds is to meet maintenance of effort. And that means that we have to use, state and local funds have to be spent in at least 90% of the amount that we spend in the prior year, or we have to submit a reason to the Ohio Department of Education why we didn't spend as much. And instituting cost-saving measures is not an allowable reason not to spend this money. Some people have said, well, why do you spend $2.5 million in order to qualify for $200,000? But in reality, that money would have been spent anyway. Our federal funds that we receive are used for salaries for teachers and one-on-one aid. Every year, we go through an application process called the CCIP, which is an application submitted to the federal government. And the IDEA funds are our largest percentage of federal funds that we receive. And what we've been spending on this really has not changed since 2010 or 2011, when we received the ARA funds. So you can see, this was the 2020 budget. It's all in salaries. Basically, it's the same positions that have been covered for the last 10 years. But this year, our allocation was just over $236,000. The positions that we fund are the intervention specialists, one alternative program specialist, and two educational aides. The alternative program specialist, that position is held by Mr. Daniels at the middle school. And that was a program that was put in place again back in 2010 during ARA funds. So we encourage parents, if you are watching and you have any questions or comments, it's imperative that we allow you to contact us and provide us with any ideas or thoughts or concerns you have regarding the use of these funds. So you can give me a call in my office. If I'm at home, all my calls are forwarded to my cell phone. So please feel free to call.
Great, thank you.
And now...
Board members, are there any questions? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to Mrs. Spence as well for preparing that. Okay, so now we'll move on to community comments. Again, because we are virtual, we're asking for community comments in advance. And so did we have any community comments for this?
I did not receive any emails for community comments.
Okay, great. So for, so for those who are listening, remember, if you have questions, you can always reach out to board members or administration. And you can always submit community comments for us to read aloud at these board meetings. Anybody have anything else to add? No? Okay. All right, moving on, we'll move to treasurer's reports and recommendations. Yep. Oh, you want to do ours now? Okay.
Just a slideshow here for the R-Star program run by Dr. Treehorn. And we recognize the R-Stars from the first semester, students and staff, a couple of months ago at a board meeting. And this is the R-Stars from this semester. I'll be a shortened semester due to the pandemic, but there is, you can see there are names of the students and staff that have been recognized. Congratulations to those folks.
Thank you. And I will say, thank you to Dr. Treehorn for putting this program together. This was her idea. And this is one of the highest honors that we can bestow on our students and staff. And we had two staff members recently receive this. And when I reached out to them to tell them congratulations, they were just thrilled to death, tickled pink with the nomination. So, and I've reached out to a couple of parents as well. And just a huge honor for those students and staff. So thank you to them, and congratulations, and thank you to Dr. Treehorn. Board members, any comments or any questions? No? Okay, all right, we'll move on to treasurer's reports and recommendations.
First, I have a resolution to wait the reading and approve the minutes from the April 20 regular meeting and the May 4 special meeting and the monthly financial reports that are submitted.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Klein? Oh.
Oh, I thought it was you.
Okay. Mr. Bassfider? Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Motion passes.
Next, I have a resolution to approve payment for the insurance waivers for the 2020 school year.
Questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Klein? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yeah.
Mrs. West?
Yes, motion passes.
Next, I have a resolution to approve appropriation adjustment based on new federal funds through the CARES or the ESSR Act.
Sir.
Questions or comments? Was this a grant that you applied for, or was it an automatic payment?
I will talk more about this during the presentation of the five-year forecast. But this is money that has been allocated from the federal government for this school year to, I don't know that its purpose is to offset some of the state funding cuts that we receive. But no, we did not have to apply for this. This is all schools in the state of, well, all schools across the country are getting some federal money this year.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Krieger?
Yeah.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider? Mrs. West?
Yes, motion passes.
Next, I have a resolution to approve a contract renewal with Stark County ESC for technology and physical services.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
We've been doing this for a number of years now.
Is there an increase in cost for this contract?
And that's completely up to the district. So if we do negotiations, if we give raises, then typically these positions will increase.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So right now, this is à la carte, or this was the same contractual rates that were in effect during the previous term? Okay. Okay. Call the roll please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast.
You have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I do have some discussion items. So normally, the spring update, we are required to do five-year forecast twice a year, one in November and one again in the spring. And usually, there isn't much. It's just kind of a follow-up on what was different this year. But as you know, this year has been like, like no year we've had before. As you know, the buildings were closed due to the COVID-19 starting in mid-March through the end of the school year. And just a week or two ago, districts were notified of cuts in state funding for the current school year. The Rootstown District is losing a quarter of a million dollars between now and June 30 from state funding. However, the federal government, as we just passed in the last resolution, is providing some funds and cares for the ESSR Act. And Rootstown District is scheduled to receive just over $95,000. So this has all got to take place, it just happened in the last couple of weeks. And this is all going to take place between the middle of May and the end of June. For the state funding cuts, we didn't see the cut on the first payment of the month in May. But we will see it on the second payment in May and the two payments in June. So because the federal government generally doesn't move very fast, we're hoping that this money can be, that we can draw down this money before the end of the school year. There's some good news and some bad news, depending on how you look at it. I was trying to find some silver linings. I know we're all pretty sick of hearing bad news. But the district was anticipating savings of close to $140,000 this year from a reduced need for substitutes, overtime, field trips, diesel fuel, things of that nature. But instead of helping the bottom line, the savings is actually helping to mitigate our funding reductions. So with the federal funds and the savings combining, the net effect on the district is hopefully going to be just approximately a loss of about $15,000 this year. There has been a lot of talk about reductions in state funding for next year. Talk is all over the place. Nobody really knows. Some districts have cut their estimates by 10%. I took a more conservative, maybe more optimistic approach and anticipated a funding reduction that is roughly equivalent to the one we had this year, which was about 4%. My thinking is that this pandemic, while it will probably go on for a while, is not going to last forever. So in my forecast, I have put us back to funding levels, returning back to normal in 2020. At this time, there is no funding formula. That'll be the beginning of the new biennium. And it's really anybody's guess as to what will happen. But my hope is that things will be returning somewhat to normal by the end of the next 18 months. We should know more before the fall forecast period. I've also estimated that there will be no more stimulus money from the federal government. However, I hope this does happen next year, and then I would have better news for you in the fall. And one of the reasons that we look five years out is to try to look at the future and make predictions and make any changes early enough so that the savings we create can be compounded during the forecast period. So in anticipating the budget shortfall, the Board of Education did institute a reduction in force for five staff members beginning this next school year. The savings in salaries and benefits is close to $200,000. And so over the course of five years, can compound to nearly a million dollars. Now, you won't see that exactly on the forecast, because during that time, there are some state and federal programs which are due to expire. So there will be some increases in the salaries just due to that effect. So it's not, not a dollar for dollar on the forecast. However, we know that we cannot cut our way to success, and at some point, we are going to need new money. The last levy passed, 2011, has lasted 10 years, which I think shows that the district is being good stewards with our taxpayers' money. Another area that I really wanted to point out, because it's another area of good news, was our insurance renewal. Our rate increase was only 4% this year. And based on estimates from the consortium and market conditions, I had anticipated a 10%. So district spends about $2 million a year on health insurance benefits. So we could be looking at the savings of $120,000 for the coming year, which will, again, compound throughout the forecast years. I'm not anticipating that our renewals will be that good in the future. Because we're a smaller district, it only takes one person with a serious illness, cancer, to significantly affect our renewal rate. I also wanted to point out on the five-year forecast, as you look at it, we did pass our renewal levy in the March-April election. And that was also good news for the district. We are anticipating that we'll have another renewal in the fall, probably one. But we are very grateful to the taxpayers who did vote to renew this levy. Lastly, I anticipated some increased delinquency in the tax, property tax payments. But I have not, I have not addressed the property valuation reductions. Again, I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that this will be over, and hopefully, people will be back to work. And when we go through our revaluation process update in 2021, I'm hoping that we're, in the summer of 2021, that we're somewhat back to normal by then. So just going forward, at this time, we don't know what it's going to take once the buildings reopen in the fall, whether we will be back as usual, whether there will be a hybrid approach to the educational process. At this time, we really don't know what potential costs there are involved. I know we've, some of the area treasurers have been pricing out, you know, plexiglass and masks for students. And, but at this time, we're just really don't have anything to put a, to put a number to. But we do know that the best we can do, which is what the board has been doing, is we keep looking at the numbers. So, you know, when we have to react, we can react and, as well as plan for the future so that we can keep using this information as best to our abilities during this. It's a very unprecedented time. There are more unknowns than there are knowns. But I think with a strategic planning process, I think the board has got a good input as to how they're going to address these changes as they occur.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions? Comments? I have a question on the $140,000 of cost savings. Is that still an accurate number from our last meeting?
It's an estimate.
Yeah.
But we won't know till the end of the year. But I know that, for example, Matt Collins told me he's not buying any more fuel this year. So that should be good. Potentially through May, I don't see a lot of subs, no overtime, no field trips. The electrical savings with some estimate. But yeah, I mean, it's an estimate, but it is going to help mitigate some of the shortfall from this.
So we'll redo those numbers in June? Okay. Any other questions? All right, so call the roll please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yeah.
Mrs. West?
Yes, motion passes.
Next, I have a very long resolution, which has been suggested by the Auditor of State's Office. We are, during this pandemic, this is some additional belts and suspenders that the Auditor of State's Office is going to be looking at, that we passed a resolution as to how we're going to pay the people that we are, by law, obligated to pay. It's just something that the Auditor of State's Office felt they wanted to see so that the board has taken action to address those contracts.
Okay, need a motion?
Came from the attorneys, based on the Auditor of State's Office.
Any other questions or comments? And this is in line with our discussion last week. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passes? Okay. All right, we'll move on to Mr. Hawkins for his superintendent report and recommendations.
First, recommend the board hire Paige Dunlap as speech and language pathologist for the upcoming school year.
Any questions or comments?
Paige is a recent grad from the University of Akron. She did her field experience actually in Kids Link and field schools, so she's familiar, and I'm real excited to have her on staff. As of current year, we've contracted that position, so it's definitely be good to have her as part of Rover family.
Great. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board accept the resignation of Kathy Hop, education lady.
Questions or comments?
Kathy's been with us one year, and indicates she wanted to leave, spends time with her family, and is growing, and she still, did indicate she would like to be on the sub-list, which certainly would like to have her.
Okay. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve a five-year lease agreement with ComDoc for school copiers effective July 1.
Questions or comments?
Our current lease is up. Yes.
Is there a price?
It has been five years.
Is there, is there a price increase?
There is a price increase, but we're paying. We are getting some more features, wanting better copiers, obviously, and also some software features that'll make it easy for our staff to print remotely and use some of the advantages of it, so. They're going to help us out with tutorials, help us how to see some of those features besides just a scan and copy, there's much more in it, so.
I do hear from the teachers that there's frustration with getting copies.
It's been a frustrating, at least this past year, the copiers were, they weren't made for the volume that we currently have, these ones on.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the contract for the elementary roof project, a final phase with their last for this coming year.
Questions or comments?
So this is the, this will complete our elementary roof, the whole roof will be repaired if this is passed, and we do have a clause in the contract that they have to be done by the start of school year, or it may be some.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other questions or comments? No? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following administrative contracts listed here.
Questions or comments? I oppose that. We discussed this at length, and I cannot support a three-year agreement from Mr. Conley. I mean, what's your recommendation?
Somebody could do it, a teacher, if they wanted to amend something, after a future meeting, be able to do that.
You can amend the contract?
That'd be something.
I frankly, I don't know.
I'm not totally sure on that, I'm sorry.
Amend his motion? We could probably, you could make your own motion. Why don't you look, why don't you look in your book? position. I believe that Mr. Bassfider could make his own motion as, for an administrative contract. We could table it. Do you guys want to?
He can make a motion to change from a one to a three.
He could make his own motion. We could break this up into two motions for Mr. Campbell and Mr. Conley. No, please. Vote on this. Well, we do have to vote on this, yes. Or we could table it. We could. I thought we already discussed this, is my, is my point. We discussed this in November, we discussed this last month, and, and I thought the consensus was, was to go on the recommendation of the superintendent. And I stand by the recommendation based on continued experience with administration and teachers and staff. Well, we've got two motions to hear. I'm sorry, we've got, we've, we have a motion, we have a second.
Well, you can't change the superintendent's recommendation.
That's right. We vote. I think I make a, we can make another motion. Okay. Yeah. Okay, so call the roll. Well, do we have any other questions or comments before we vote? No? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes. Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following job descriptions for director facilities and director transportation.
Questions or comments?
And the goal here is to break up the two jobs now that we have between a director working, transportation working supervisor, and our director of buildings and grounds, kind of make it more of an equitable job description for both of them. And so that's what the goal is here, and to plan, the plan is to have, if these job descriptions are approved, and go out and look for, to hire these positions, to have somebody recommendation for you at the next board meeting. These folks will start July 1. More division of labor, more equitable, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Does Mr. Collins assist with the creation of these job descriptions? Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, based on, I'm saying, we would really need to have somebody hired for all facilities, and have them approved, if you have two of these, I agree, so that, I think, we should have a special call, maybe even try to get this all done, and we, we space space.
Ideally, because I think somebody, if they're severing with the current employer, we wait till June 29th, that leaves our next meeting, and that doesn't really give them one data back. So I think that's something, definitely, whenever we're ready to have these dishes to hire, all their meeting, and you guys can go on that. And I think that could be done, you know, if the postings go out this week, certainly can get that turned around, that day of 12th, is 12th a Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think we can. I'm going to make a gauge, you can see we're in the process, if that means it has to be the 8th or 15th, whatever date it is.
Once we dispose of the, sorry, if you're in the news.
Yes, once we get it.
When will this be posted?
On the website, I'm sorry, we'll post internally, we'll post on the website, we'll get it out in the newspaper, we'll get it out through different advertising agencies.
I know people have been asking when the posting's gonna.
Soon as it's voted on. So.
Like I said, April was the longest month, or the longest year that ever was, right?
This is approved tonight, I can get out, we can get it out, if not tomorrow, then by Wednesday for sure. So, it's a day or so to turn around.
All right, any other questions or comments? No? You call the roll, please.
Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following classified contracts for next school year.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes. Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following contracts for our teaching staff effective next school year.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following list of substitutes for next school year.
Questions or comments? I would say this is a, this is a long list, but we have trouble finding substitutes sometimes. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve MOU with the Roots Town Education Association regarding supplemental contracts.
Questions or comments?
Basically, within this, due to the grand opening of school closures, the spring sports were unfortunately not being able to dissipate this year, so the agreement was that those coaches that had been approved for contracts, you see 30% of the contract. And we will provide that they, they did a lot of work in the winter, before season to get ready, so that was the agreement, that is the agreement on the table.
Questions or comments?
Question, is this being applied, this is across the board, the coaching and the other?
Anything in spring, any spring supplementals, four-year supplementals, we paid at 100%. Anything that was paid previously, whether it be ball, winter sports, are paid, were paid 100%, and already have been paid a while ago. These are just for spring sports, you're middle and high school, baseball, softball, track, basically.
All the goals that you care, supplemental, they're done and paid.
Yes, yes, that 100%.
If it was someone, I had a, like, false stat that was, um, that something else was going to pay at 100%, and these first sports, coaches would have to pay for the, June 12th.
It's hard to, in this last three months, to find anything equitable and fair across the board, and trying to do, there is a little bit of savings to, to the board, to the district here. And I appreciate the teachers' association for working with us on this, realizing, we're certainly getting some compensation for the time that they didn't do, so.
This is what that was coming to be?
Correct, right, right, it's, it's, right.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Siciliano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend the board approve the following extended time for the upcoming school year.
It's time to be on site.
As long as we're able to be here, yes, and starting to get a plan for, have all our, especially office staff at this time of year to come back, and there are some things that need to be, they can do a lot at home, but there's, especially as we get to the end of the year events, so yes, if, if they don't, if they can't be here, then these days, I'm not sure.
Can any of?
This lasts a whole school year, so this goes for, last year's group, extended time goes through July 1, and so August 1st would start next year.
This is for extended time for the, for the next school year.
Right, this is for, starting August 1.
Starting August 1.
This is up to now.
To get ready for the school year?
But it, August 1st is basically July 31st, so basically one calendar year they have, so it compenses both school years, ending one year and starting another year. Starting one year and ending one year is, is, is.
So starting next school year and ending next school year.
Right, right, and last year, you approved it, this, this July, this July.
I would have it paid out, or, they, that.
As they use them, the time clock, and I think, very rarely, but I know that, they don't use all, they don't pay for all of them, so there is a mechanism, especially to make sure that they're here.
And they can't use paid time off for those days?
They can't use personal time, sick time. Basically, their contract's over, most of these folks are over, the secretaries are two weeks after school starts, so they get more time, the counselor's done, counselors have done today, the students have done, so there's obviously a lot to, especially at the high schools, and so on, so that's time above their contract.
So for this school year, I know we approved extended days last year, and again, it's, if they don't use them, if we don't need them, they won't use them, but are they able to come in and get some of this work done now, so they're not using extended time for this school year?
Well, last year, this, like, it started in August, and it goes to this June, and probably July.
Right.
So.
But they haven't used it yet.
Not the ones in July yet, or in June, July.
Right, so my question is, do they need to use it if they could come in in May, see what I'm saying, before the school year is over, during their contracted dates, to get some of this work done?
There may be some they could do during that time, but mostly it's for a time after, like, we have, for example, our, the guidance office comes in July, wants a week to, should we do transcripts and things of that nature, that everybody else is off during July, the offices, so there's, some are time sensitive. So there's, some, some are time sensitive, have to be here because there's nobody else here to do, do those duties. But they're, I see what you're saying as far as the, I know we're out now.
Right, I just want to be.
I'm not sure exactly how many of those days, and if there's, we want to use all.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sisley?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Klein? Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend a board approve shift if I should pay for our afternoon employees to work during day in the summer months.
Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sisley?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Bassfider? Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Recommend a board approve the following contracts to provide extended school year services listed here.
Questions or comments? What is this for exactly?
These are students, basically, based on their, their IEP, if I, extended school year services are required, we need to provide it. You might find the, as Kai just went through, what, what best suits them, so. Some, some, you know, different programs at the Holland County or Kids Lane, and someone with a personal tutor.
Any other?
Depends on each child's little.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, separate. Three of that, of, of, they're going to program, you'll see later on, there's two that are basically individual tutor.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes, motion passes.
Recommend a board approve Eric Daniels provide exchange school year services over the summer.
Questions or comments?
And Mr. Daniels is one of our, our intervention specialists and, and we've been working with. Showed him over summer. It's all based on what the IEP, individual IEPs come up with, so a year of the year, this is about the same amount we have. It's not out of bounds, so whatever an IEP team decides, that's what the child gets. So I would expect, just like our numbers went up a little bit, I would suspect these will go up a little bit as time goes on, as our IEP, you know, students' special needs go up. No clear ballpark though. Question.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sisley?
Yes.
Mr. Klein? Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Motion passes.
And recommend a board approve Jennifer Tchotchoyak, I'm sure I pronounced that wrong, to provide ESY services this summer.
Questions or comments? This is related to the first two motions?
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Sisley?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Motion passes.
And finally, I recommend a board approve this tentative list here of class of 2001.
Questions or comments?
Unfortunately, as everybody knows, these, these students are really, have been affected more, probably more than any other grade level, you know, the best time of your, of your years in school, you know, with proms and with, with the end of the year and graduation such, and they lost out on all of it due to pandemic, so. We're trying to find different ways to honor these students, they deserve it, and it's a great class that we have here, and I'll explain a little bit later on what we're doing for some of these seniors, but certainly feel for them.
Any other questions or comments?
Missed a lot.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Sisley?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider? Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to reports, Mr. Hawkins?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank the Rootstown residents for passing the new levy recently, so we appreciate your support. A list of this year's end of the year events, most of them, which all of them are going to be virtual, will be posted on district website soon here. Each child's building principal, we giving a call out, have, if they haven't done so yet, regarding the, the dates and times, we can view their presentations. I'd like to thank the, you know, students, the staff, parents in the community for all the patience, understanding, support during this pandemic. I reiterate, again, special thanks to our local churches for providing food to our families on Fridays, and United Way for providing food on Wednesdays, as our cafeteria provides food to our students on Tuesdays. I also like to thank the following group for honoring our seniors. First, Alliance Club, who donated our senior signs, yard signs for every child received this last week. A yard sign that our bus drivers dropped off last Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe, and the seniors home, we might have seen it on TV. So that was a nice gesture from Alliance Club, we thank them. The Rootstown Sports Boosters will be getting a banner this week on the softball fence of all the senior spring sport athletes, that should be coming this week at some point. And the Rootstown Chamber of Commerce has purchased and will be this week, hopefully Wednesday, has purchased yard signs, which has every senior, their picture of a senior, their name on it, it'll be in our front yard here. Hopefully, again, as early as Wednesday, and of course, our seniors can take those yard signs at a later date home with them, so. So something to try to make, do something special for these seniors, and these folks have been outstanding, and thank them for that. Graduation itself, you know, we're doing a personalized graduation with students and their families, some of their family, limited amount, we can come in and we'll film the, them walking across the stage here in high school, and then the video we put together, and we'll go live on June 7th at 2:30, the link will be on the website for that. The senior awards went, went live last night, you can still view that if you need, if you, you wish. The fifth grade awards will be shown on June 1st. Eighth grade recognition will also be shown on June 1st. And we also are trying to formulate a plan for seniors to pick up their diplomas. We have some ideas yet, we haven't finalized everything that, right now, tentatively, it's June 8th from 5 to 7, but we're trying to find a plan to really honor these students, again, who have, who have missed so much, so. And again, all these events are on the website. Finally, the last day of school is June 3rd. However, this is the last week of new assignments during this remote learning process. We'll use the remaining days, about seven days left, for students to get caught up, some students, you know, need to get caught up with some of their assignments, if they aren't caught up, there's enrichment activities that they can, teachers will provide them to do. So that will happen this week. We have, as a, as a district, begun the planning process for next year, as Kai mentioned earlier, who knows what next year's going to look like? Getting all the plans together, we'll follow directions of the Department of Health and what that may look like, but we were planning for business as usual, as normal, we hope that's the case. That we also had the remote learning, like we're doing now, or a hybrid format where some schools come certain days, or just some grade levels are remote, some grade was come, grade levels come in. There's really no good solution to that, in my opinion, but we're working on those plans, and sometime in the middle of summer, if I had that finalized, once we get, again, direction from the, from the state and Department of Health, and hopefully, we can come back as normal, but we'll, we're going to work with our teaching staff in the back next week and for a couple of days, each of them, to try to start planning out and getting some ideas. We did have a parent survey that went out last week and surveyed our staff to try to find a way to, what may work best if we have to adapt again next year. So that's where we're at.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Valva? Okay, I do have a question. The March and April books, what date were those closed out?
We don't close anymore.
Okay, because, yeah, okay, I noticed that they were.
It changes, so, March 1st, we would have gone into the mid March, mid month of March.
Okay, so there's no need to close out the books and all that anymore? Okay, okay. Board members, any reports? Old business? New business? Yeah. Okay, questions or comments? No, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Sisley?
No.
Mrs. West?
No. Motion passes.
Something I could talk about, um, we, me and Mr. Hawkins spoke for a bit about pricing for concrete and building. Did you get an accurate number? I know you said it's something between 20 and 22,000 for the high school and 57 to do all the way down. Are those accurate numbers?
I believe so, I left it, Matt Collins, you know, had a couple of local contractors come out, give estimates, and I do have, he did email that to me, the exact number, that was roughly around 20, 22,000 for this part right here in the high school. The rest, I think it was 57,000 to do the whole, to do everything, but I can double check that, because I can say I don't have those in front of me, but I can send them out to you guys. I can look at my phone maybe too, and find his email.
I need that we approve the funding perceived of the project, I know, I was hoping, if you have the money, currently, and permanently fund the maintenance improvement. I would recommend that we go into the high school first at the roughly 20 to 22,000 now.
So you're making a motion to replace the concrete in front of the high school?
Say 25,000, you know, 25,000 would be, um, should be in the ballpark to be able to do that.
Okay, do I have a second? All right, questions or comments?
Besides the roof project right now, purchase of any maybe vehicles, that's kind of what we got behind with strategic planning a little bit, that's what that group, I think, was going to come to the board with for some of these recommendations.
I guess I'm, I, I think that this is Matt's area to make a recommendation to the administration and to kind of, if he's got the money in his budget, what projects need to be done, I mean, he's, he's on the front line, he's determining, you know, we're, right now, all we do is triage things, and so, and I'm not saying that that's the right way to do it, but that's the budget that we have, so I'm going to defer to Matt to tell us what his recommendation is, and so, I, I just, I just don't think that I can, you know, say, yeah, we're going to put $25,000 to this, if, if he had planned on using that for a bus or a van down the road, or if, or if he's holding it because he thinks the boiler is going to go out next year. I, it's, I don't think it's our job to Monday morning quarterback these types of projects, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, we are in the bus bid process.
We approved, I think we approved it two meetings ago.
Through a bid process, we are receiving state, additional state funds this year to help with the purchase of a bike.
Just back to question you asked, the, the, yeah, and I'll give a rough numbers, but basically, you know, the amount here we talked about, you know, and then from the high school to Route 44, you're talking somewhere of $6,000, and then from, with the high school, the area we just talked about would end, all the way to the the elementary, you know, we're talking lower 40,000, just to begin it, so. You know, actually, the, there was a, there was a group that came out this year, we, well, I'm
Was it from Maplewood? I mean, weren't we talking to students from Maplewood?
It was, was it the soil conservation? I'm going to say it wrong, but it's one of those local agencies that had a $20,000 grant to give us to do that, they were going to look, work with our science teachers and create somehow, something out here that make it not only eco-friendly, but also make it look aesthetically better, so we're working on that, and then we stopped. We stopped schools, so that is something that, there is, there are funds out there for that, that aren't district funds, that we can tap into to take care of this whole, whatever you want to call this thing here.
Well, it sounds like there's options too. I would agree with that.
Nothing, not a problem, yeah, I mean, it is safe issue, it's probably a safe issue all the way down, to be honest. One thing to say is the Band-Aids are on, it's another to leave safe issues open, and to me, that's a clear cut menu right there. That, the doors of the elementary, so these things aren't, I may, they're not something you can just push off and Band-Aid over and over again, this is stuff that's pretty, it's a fun thing to do. So. I think, I mean, maybe we should look at it for the next meeting.
I would like to look at it.
Get some pricing incorporated all the way in, I think, I think the project that's going, if you can out there, they might be should also.
Why don't I get with back, come back with list of projects?
From an engineering or a mechanic.
That's, that, that, I don't know, not there, do that and have shared up the, do that, do redo the brickwork.
It should not be carrying up any concrete to do, but we could, we could do a part of this concrete work, and then we can do the rest of the concrete work, but we could do it in the vault and space.
I'd rather have a piece of gun.
Yeah, so, yeah, if we don't, if we're not going to move today, then I still think we need to look at this, we have to take care of why schools are out, there aren't students here. I mean, we've kind of had an opportunity, I haven't been to up on there, but we kind of opinionally, maybe we could take the care of some of these items now. We need to do that.
I think maybe that, I would, if I, if I look at the whole project, I would like to spend the money at the whole place. I think walking down the side of it looks like not very nice. It would be nice if we done it over with, I thought people turning ankles and everything, it's just locked up, it's all bad, we just have all that.
I disagree, but I'm not sure what the money is, I don't know, I think, we're probably going to get it back and back to this, we can, you know, see numbers, we don't want them.
I think we made a list of all their items too, that, I can do that next.
Right, well, he was, he was compiling that list of items for us, you know, kind of, again, we have to triage our issues. again, we have to triage our issues, we can't fix everything, but there are some that need fixed now, some that are gonna need fixed and then some that we can kind of pull off. We also have a new person that's coming on board too. So, you know, I think we have to be fair and deferential to that person as well. We can't make a bunch of decisions and tie someone's hands with their budget. I mean, you know, I don't think that that's fair to that person that's coming in. I think it has to be a smooth transition. I think they need to work together. That's just, that's, that's my opinion. And I, if, if there's grant money that's available, we talked about working with Maplewood students, we talked about, you know, what other options are out there. I think it's, I think we shouldn't rush to take money out of our budget when frankly, we're talking about our budget's getting worse. I think that we should take the time to explore all of our options. That's, that's my opinion. And I think that Matt has been extremely busy with what we discussed last meeting, trying to figure out how we do the summer work now with us being closed. That's what he's focused on now. And, and we're saving money by not, by foregoing summer help. So, you know, so I don't think that he's not doing anything. That's my opinion. But we have, any other questions or comments? Cause we've got two motions. What's that? The motion was to approve, no, the motion was to approve funds up to $25,000 for purposes of replacing the concrete in front of the high school. Does that, does that accurately reflect? So our next, our next meeting is June 29th. And it's very possible that we may not have Matt's successor started yet. And do you think that he or she needs to be part of this conversation?
We talk about them like a business, basically run like a business. We make decisions, ask people to follow along. We, it's common sense that it's something that everyone do and that has its priority. I also believe this. That's, more along than one. Not that, I honestly weigh Matt, I mean, anyway, that's usually why I said, I'm talking about these things. People I asked, you know, when I got frightened, they thought. I think he's eager to do a lot of, I'm not speaking for him, it's just my perception. I think, you know, I think we can push stuff off too long. We run into a successor and like.
Yeah, well, I, I respectfully disagree. I run a business separate from this. And when you talk about succession planning, I think that you need to involve the predecessor and the successor. Because the, the, the predecessor, Matt may have, I mean, that may be the solution, is to go out and contract for this concrete. Or it may be grant monies, or maybe Maplewood, or the successor may have another idea. And I, and, and I also think that we should not tie someone's hands when it comes to their budget. So I think that it should be a 360 conversation as part of the transition plan. That's my feeling. Any other questions or comments? But that would be a special meeting, right?
Right. I'm gonna have to hire those two positions. I'm gonna go open the poster. Oh, I think so. Remember June, we talked about June 12th, June 15th? June 15th, I think, for sure.
Yeah.
I think Karen said it right now, and I'll let you know if we get behind her. But I think if that date works, put in pencil.
I'm out of town that week. And yes, the week of the 8th works, does that work for everyone?
I'll go later in the week. Yes, that week, just to give us, just to look at the holiday next week and.
I'm good the entire week of the 8th.
Want to stay on the 11th, Thursday? Whatever you guys expect.
Okay. So June 11th, 6:00 PM, that'll be a special meeting. So.
Yeah, so we get behind or whatever, I will let you know. Push that date back, but.
So back to, so back to this, do we want to table this motion until June 29th meeting and see where we're at? Or do we want to table it to, my preference would be to table it to the July meeting, but what does everybody else think?
If we table to July, maybe we definitely will not be able to do the transition easily. So, I mean, when I made the decision up or down, I think we should do it earlier. That way we have the option.
Do we have a second? Okay. So Mr. Bassfider recommended that we table the motion until June 29th meeting? Okay, Mr. Cicelyana, second? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Cicelyana?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yeah.
Mrs. West?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, any other new business? Okay, so moving on to strategic planning. I don't think that we really have made a lot of progress with the strategic planning. But I would say that today's meeting is indicative of the fact that we need planning committees and decision-making and strategic planning prior to the board meetings. That's just my opinion. So I would, I would like to see us kind of have a restart to that strategic planning. And possibly, maybe June 11th would be the meeting to do that, cause it's a short meeting, but at least we can revisit where we were at in March. What, what does everybody think about that? June 11th, because that's a short meeting. So if we can revisit where we, where we were at with the strategic planning, because I think that, when did we do that, in March? That was one of the best meetings we've ever had, in my opinion. Yeah.
If the doctor is listening tonight, I, I hope that at some point, you kind of give it back to the school business, or deciding whether or not you turn it back in August. Governor, who I think, who I think is there.
Have a motion though. We can't make a motion in the Senate to Congress.
Yeah.
Make a motion to, to have a resolution, which is what we're asking for. Then, right, we can let it go. We can make a resolution if we want to. To the governor, to state, I think we might do that, but make that one.
I, I would agree with that. I mean, in my industry, healthcare is local. No one hospital is, is like another. And so no one school district is like another. I can't imagine that the OSBA doesn't have.
Yeah, we have, you know, with all the eight.
Some lobbying.
Different groups are out there, but it's more about getting through this year. So I'm sure that's coming, what you're talking about, but. Definitely have local control on that.
I knew that we draft our resolution. We send it to the governor of Ohio recommending, you know, sit you on the floor. Alex Mingle is currently in the office. That's on.
Do we have a second? Call the roll please. Yeah.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cicelyana?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes, motion passes. Anything else on strategic planning? What's that? Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. 7:28. Call the roll please.
Mr. Cicelyana?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mr. Bassfider?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you to Lee for putting this on.